Good evening. We are at the City Council Chambers, City Hall, 10 West State Street. Today's date's February 24, 2020. Time is 5:30 PM. And the City Council meeting is called to order. A notice to the public is as follows. The Mayor and Council welcome comment from the public during discussion of any agenda items. Step to the mic, state your name and address for the record, limit your time to three minutes or less so others may speak. All speakers shall clearly and speak clearly, direct your comments to the Mayor and Council, and not to any Consular specifically. It's at the discretion of the Mayor and Council to respond to specific questions and comments, or to have staff respond during the meeting. Now that we've been called to order, let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Isom's absent. Martin?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Weirin?
Here.
Cahill?
Here.
Gowdy?
Here.
Thank you. Before calling for any Mayor, Council, and Administrative comments, let's do yours of service recognition. Chief?
Good evening. Mike Tupper, Marshawn Police Department. And it's my honor and pleasure to be standing here tonight with Officer Ryan Dell. And Ryan is here to give a 30-minute speech.
Hey, that's your job.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did tell Ryan about that. No, Ryan's here celebrating his 15 years of service with the City of Marshawn. So, I wasn't here when Ryan was hired, but whoever made that decision made an outstanding decision. And I've gotten to, I've been able to work with Ryan for the last almost nine years. And I've really enjoyed the opportunity to work with Ryan and to learn from Ryan. He's an outstanding police officer, one of the most professional people I've ever worked with. High levels of integrity, hard worker, very disciplined, and somebody that goes out every day and does an outstanding job for us. Now, Ryan does a lot of important things in our police department, to include serving on our tactical team. How many years now, Ryan?
Twelve.
Twelve years on the tactical team. He's a field training officer, which is a very important job in our police department, because he's teaching the next generation of police officers how to do their job. He's also our defensive tactics instructor. So, he keeps us all sharp and ready to go and doing our job at a high level. So, and the other thing that I'm very proud of Ryan for is he founded our Kids Cop Connection Program. So, Ryan is very focused on community relations and building better relationships within the community. And I'm just very proud to call Ryan a colleague and a friend, and I just want to congratulate you on 15 years of excellent service. Thank you.
Congratulations and thanks for the service.
Would any of the Consulars or the Administrator like to address the group tonight?
Your Honor?
Yes.
May I?
You may.
After the February 10th meeting, it was brought to my attention that I have offended some people on the council and in the public because of my debate style. So, publicly to the council members, the Mayor, City Administrator, City Clerk, City Attorney, and to the public, I want to apologize. I meant no harm. I thought I was following Chapter 35, which is our rules, that debate should be focused, but free and open. But there are some contradictions in Chapter 35, so I will do a better job to play by the rules, and all's I ask is that we all play by all the rules. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments up here? If not, I will admit, I don't, I hope this is not a real long meeting, because last Wednesday I got a verdict, which turned out well over in Story County, and on Thursday got an airplane to fly to Jackson Hole. From there, we flew to San Francisco, and we got to meet our new grandbaby, Eva Simone Greer-Fenton. It was a wonderful weekend, but on the way back in Denver, the plane couldn't be used, so they had to find another plane, get another crew. We didn't get in, and we didn't get in and into bed until after 2 o'clock last night, and I had a full day today. So, if I stumble a little bit tonight, you'll understand why, and if I try to speed things up a little bit, now you'll know why. And then, in keeping with practice, I'd like to mention a couple in town that has just been instrumental to making this place great. Vic and Gail Helberg, what triggered this? Well, they were already on my list to do, but what triggered it was the newspaper article last week about the Iowa High School Athletic Association Award that went for, to Vic for filming games, running the scoreboard and clock. And in addition to all the things he's done for the high school, he founded and continued the, with his wife, Gail, they founded and have continued the Adopt a Vet Program, which has been so well received by the veterans that don't have family members out at the Veterans Home. He founded an association for the US Seattle, USS Seattle, that has reunions, and he's in charge of their newsletters, does things like that. I've intersected with him with the Central Business District, where he's just been a constant cohort here who has done all sorts of things with all sorts of innovative ideas. It's at his jewelry store where they store the flags when they're changed out from different places. I've been down in his basement at the store to clean the flags annually. You'd be amazed at the number of things that that couple has done for this town, the fundraisers. And then, just most recently, he's one of the small group of people that is in charge of the fundraising to rehab and fix up and really improve the Veterans Memorial Coliseum that we have next door. And they also put flags in every school in the district, in this, in this city. Just a wonderful couple, and I had to give them a shout-out. With that said, let's go on to the Item F, and that's the Consent Agenda, is there a motion to approve that?
I move.
Second.
Gowdy motion. Weirin second. Madam Clerk?
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Now, with the voice that they use on the ads for car sales, would you read the Consent Agenda, please?
Approve the February 10, February 17 Council Minutes and Bill List of $1,477,777.37. Approve the financial statements for September and October 2019. Resolution to name depositories, establish maximum deposit amounts. Resolution authorized in the city to submit a grant application to the State of Iowa Governor's Traffic Safety Bureau for safety highway grant application for October 1st through September 30, 2021. Liquor license renewals, Casey's General Store #1303, Dollar General Stores #2019, and 4206, Jiffy Convenience Stores, the 918, and Wandering Creek.
Thank you. That was quick. Let's go on to Item G, resolutions. What's our first one?
Resolution authorizing the city to submit a grant application to the COPS hiring program.
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second, Your Honor.
Discussion.
Logan, Mike Tupper, Marshawn Police Department. So, there should be a memo in your packet regarding requests or seeking authorization to apply for a COPS hiring grant. If approved, we would be applying for a grant that would allow us to hire one police officer, and it would be my intention to then assign a second police officer to the school district as a school resource officer, and that second officer would work in, at Miller Middle School and Lenahan Intermediate School. So, the program, the federal funding, provides 75% of entry-level wages and benefits for a new police officer. Of course, we're not sending the school district an entry-level police officer. It's important to understand that. But we would be able to backfill the person that we would be sending to the school district with the new police officer. And then, the school district and some conversations that I've had with Superintendent Schute has agreed to pay for the remaining 25% of entry-level wages and benefits for the person that we would be hiring. So, it's a three-year, or 36-month program, and there is an obligation that if we accept the grant, that we keep this position in place at least for another 12 months after the initial 36 months expires. So, there's no such thing as free money, you all know that. So, if we add another police officer to the force, there's going to be some training costs, there's going to be some equipment costs, uniform costs, things of that nature. But in my opinion, those costs are minimal in comparison to the benefits that we'll get back from having another officer on the force and from having a second officer to serve in the school district. So, it would be my recommendation that we push forward with this grant application. It's due March 11th, and we're getting a late start on it. So, I'll be burning the midnight oil for the next two weeks if you give me the thumbs up, but we'll get it submitted and see what happens. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, comments?
Yes, Your Honor. So, have you ever worked with this particular grant program before?
Yes, I have. Yeah. In fact, when I first started here, almost nine years ago, the city had a COPS-funded, at least one COPS-funded police officer position. So, we're familiar with it. I think it's, I think it's a worthwhile endeavor, and again, I think we should go ahead and see what happens.
Other comments or questions up here?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Chief, I'm assuming the three summer months, what is the, is that back on the force then, when school's not in session?
Well, in theory, but our school resource officer now is asked to, to limit the amount of time they take off during the school year. And so, during the summer, they're usually on vacation, or they're catching up on some training and some other assignments. So, in actuality, we don't really get a lot of extra service from that person during the summer, because they need to use their vacation time.
Other questions or comments? Public comment? Roll call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Very good, that one carried. I know the school district is excited about that prospect, too, to get those two middle schools served. On to Resolution Number Two, Madam Clerk.
Resolution adopting the Americans with Disabilities Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan.
Still move?
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, so I did learn that the, what is the hyperlink in the agenda does not actually take you to it. It puts some other things ahead of it, so I'm going to copy and paste here. But the document in and of itself is 1,037 pages, so distribution is a little bit difficult. Most of that actually is related to, let's see here, if it will let me pull it up here. Most of that is related to our building analysis. The other portion of it is, is related to our right-of-way analysis, and then the introduction. So, the first two parts are the small parts. When you get into Part Three, that's where it gets into quite a bit of length. We'll hopefully be able to spend some time breaking it down by building and having it a little bit more accessible on our website. But basically, this is the culmination of about 18 months' worth of work. Last summer, we had some interns from Bolton and Mink that were walking around town and doing sidewalk assessments and curb walk assess, or curb ramp assessments, and all of that information has been compiled in a plan that's making some recommendations for how we proceed. And so, this was something that we were actually supposed to have adopted back in 1992 or 1993, and it's something we've been without for many years, but something we really do need to have at this point. So, the, the plan is complete, and it is there for your adoption, and then implementation would, would begin pretty much immediately.
Questions or comments?
Does the plan provide suggestions or recommendations of what we need to do to be up to code in areas that we are falling behind?
Yes, and so, they've also looked at our capital improvement plan that we were putting together, though it's not formally adopted, to just make estimates as to how many projects we would have in future in the next five years that would be addressing things that were deficiencies within the plan. So, they're not spelling out directly how we should be doing it, but basically saying that there's a, there is a certain amount of money and some, some thought that needs to be given each year in our capital improvement planning process towards this. One of the things where we actually, in the Road Use Tax Fund, have $50,000 set aside for curb ramp repair. And so, that's one of those things that's there, which the engineering department will, will look into. We're trying to combine projects where we have like a roadway project, trying to use road use tax to address sidewalk issues if we can, and so, there are, there are things that we're doing. On the park side, there were some, actually, some public comments that were received related to some areas of accessibility in the parks. And so, in the capital improvement plan, there is sort of an allocation for just sidewalks and other things, it just generally in parks, and so, Jeff will be directing that money towards those, those comments that came in as being the most pressing.
Anything else? Go ahead. I'm sorry. Anything else from the Consulars up here? Any public comment on this issue? Roll call.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Very good, that carried, and Juan Abel, read the next resolution, please.
Resolution authorizing the transfer of insurance reimbursement to the Tax Increment Financing Fund, $140,000 to further Coliseum renovation.
Floor is open for a motion to approve it?
I move for approval.
I'll second.
Discussion.
There is not much more to add. This was a discussion item from the last agenda, and this is needed to formally complete that transfer.
Questions or comments up here? Public comment? Roll call.
Cahill?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item, Juan Abel.
Resolution approving a development agreement with Kating Properties for the construction of the Park Place condominiums in Washington Street.
Move for approval.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, this is a, a project that has recently gone through the rezoning process, and we had some conversation about it then. Kating Properties is purchasing 17 and 1/2 acres, that is between 9th and 12 Streets, just to the south of West Lincoln Way, and planning to build, I'll pull up the concept. They did remind me that this is only a draft at this point, and so, they're not tied to this specifically, but this gives you an idea of where we're located and what they're looking at, ultimately constructing 94 duplex units on the property there. And so, as we started to, to talk about this, we, we knew that public access was going to be something that would be necessary for this project. The, there's two little areas of right-of-way that the city has, is needing to acquire, and those are in process right now. And ultimately, the, the way the agreement reads is that the city would be responsible for constructing the street, with Kating Properties being responsible for providing the engineering and plans and specification development for the roadway, as well as providing the water infrastructure as well, and, as well as then the land that the, dedicating the land that the, the street would be on. So, we do have a, a cost estimate in the packet as well, which is upwards of $700,000. But ultimately, as we looked at this, this is the chance to provide a through connection of a street that has been deadened since, I think, the 80s, and ultimately enhance our transportation network in this area of town, as well as provide public access for a 94-unit development.
Questions or comments up here?
Can I ask, and I just don't know the answer to this, what has been the practice of the city when a developer wants to develop as regard to roads? It's, it seems like we've talked several of them, and I can't ever get a good sense for which ones we provide, which ones developers provide.
So, developers provide their own private drives, which means they're not developing it to a city-street standard. We're talking about Washington Street being a city-street standard, whereas what you see in the concept there in terms of the, the loops and things, that would be a private drive. So, that's kind of the difference there. You know, ultimately, I would say that this has been, since I've been here, it's been a period of kind of changing conversation, that I think two council members who have been here a little bit longer probably recall that this has been a conversation where the developer has typically borne these costs. But ultimately, we've, we've been talking about what can the city do to better enhance housing development in that need, and this was one way specifically with this project, and more than likely with other projects that could be coming forward, where ultimately the city is the owner of the infrastructure, public infrastructure, not private, in the end. And so, that really seems to be where our best fit is, is in the development of infrastructure. So, so this is kind of setting a new trend if this were to be approved, but it's something that, you know, will, it's going to be something that comes up on a case-by-case basis with each development. But this was also something, too, with the housing initiative. If this was approved, we were going to be communicating this with, with the consultants there as sort of another, they, they wanted to know what incentives have we offered, and that this is definitely one thing besides the tax abatement program that we have done.
Can I ask one more question on the picture there, excuse me, or on the concept? From Washington at the condominiums or the units labeled 21 and 22, there is a, it looks like an outlet that goes to Lincoln Way. Is that a street? Is that a pathway, a sidewalk? I just don't know what that is.
It's a 10-foot wide driveway, essentially, I think is what it has been previously used for. The developer has expressed that they have no interest in keeping that portion of the property, and I think there's, there's just a question of what happens with it, but there was no intent that it be used for access from Lincoln Way.
That was my question. Thank you.
Other Consular questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
With all the incentives that we are giving right now with tax abatements and using TIF and everything else, and we have a lot of vacant lots in town that Kating could put these 94 units on, scattered all over town, which would help fill neighborhoods, the infrastructure's already in place, we've already put the street in, the sewers are already there. I would like to see Kating put the street in at their cost. I know in the past, developers in this town always put the infrastructure in, and I'm talking years ago, before your time, City Administrator, but I think we're opening a Pandora's Box, so I will be voting no on us, us asking the taxpayers to foot the bill when they're putting 94 units in, they're going to generate a lot of income for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else up here?
Public comment?
Ready for a public comment?
Leighton Soro's, 911 May Street, Marshalltown. I would just hope that the council has done its due diligence to make sure that the developer has done the appropriate wetland delineation and mitigation procedure to make sure that this does not run against any regulatory hurdles. For your information, I am an Army Corps Certified Wetland Delineator, and I run into situations rather often where that due diligence has not been done, and it leads to legal situations for cities and other entities, so I hope that you've done your work on this.
Thank you. Any other public comment? If not, let's call the roll.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Weirin?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Very good. That, that number four resolution carried. Let's go on to number five, please.
Number five, we've got two resolutions relating to the airport hangar improvements, hangar and terminal. Resolution approving amended engineering services, Amendment Number One, for the terminal amendment for an increase of $133,400 to Clapsettle Garber Associates, and the second one being an increase of $46,150 for airfield vault improvements with Clapsettle Garber Associates. Would the council like to vote on those separately or individually?
I'd express a preference to do them together. Does anybody resist that? Okay.
Good evening, Justin Nichol, Public Works-
Is there a motion to-
Yep.
No, thanks. I'm sorry.
Sure, I move that we accept Resolution 2020-044 and 2020-045.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Comment?
Thank you.
And now, good evening, Justin Nichol, Public Works Director. As the City Clerk read to you, we have two, two agreements before you tonight, but if you looked at my memo that's included in the packet, we thought it prudent to review with the council the overall project budget, just so there was total transparency here. In January of 2020, as we were developing our CIP, we projected the need to borrow about a million and a half for this overall project between the terminal and the hangar. And as we've continued with project development, we, we will be seeking more like $1.725 million borrowing. As you also read down my memo, this puts the cost sharing between the city and the DOT FFA, FAA, not FFA, at about $55.45. So, in my opinion, we're still getting .45 cents on the dollar towards this much-needed project for the City of Marshalltown. We have several documents added here. We've got a, a budget summary, which takes a little time to, to follow through and see all the way through. We've got a couple documents for review if necessary, but looking for any feedback or conversation before we go ahead and vote about these two engineering agreements. I do have a representative from Clapsettle and Garber here, and we have Steve Albrecht from Marshalltown Aviation here. Are there any questions I or Mike or Steve can answer for you?
Do we have, I'm sorry. I have lots of questions tonight. When it comes time, or if it comes time to borrow the money, is that going to take a bond, issue a vote on that, a community vote?
Um, not, no, not a community vote.
Not a community vote. Okay. Thank you.
Other questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Am I allowed to ask, Justin, on just the two resolutions, or on the overall budget attachment?
All of the above.
Justin, how did we miss this?
So, as we've-
This is like a 15% overrun, right?
It is. There, there's no lying or pulling the sheets over your eyes here. As we've gone through the project development, the original thought was to place a new terminal and a new hangar on the exact site of where an existing terminal and existing hangar is. Still listening?
That pretty much answers it right there.
Okay. Yes. As we made those assumptions, we looked at alternatives to that option, and through the project team are open to relocating the hangar and the terminal. That way, there isn't a need for temporary facilities while we reconstruct those. As Consular Martin's heard me say before, when, when you move to a new location and you start digging in the earth, you never know what you might find. So, yes, I freely feel like I'm standing here with my hat in my hand, but yeah, we're going to need to ask for more money to be able to do this. I would also point out that CGA has done an excellent job of going out and finding us other money to, to work on this project. Does that answer your question adequately, or would you like to follow up?
And the other player, I'd like to follow up-
Okay.
-if possible.
Sure.
Steve's on board with this, right?
Yes, Steve is on board, and I can let him answer for himself if that's what you want to hear, but I do know that, yes, he's on board with this.
Thank you.
As the user and the operator, he is.
I haven't been flying anymore but, for the last couple of years, but I can tell you that many of the airports that do this do it that same way. So, if you get onto the Quad Cities at Moline, that's how it was done, Mount Joy, I think it happened in here, at Clinton as well, Council Bluffs, I think, as well. It's, it's a pretty common way to leave the old facilities, still use those, but have the newer, shinier, nicer places.
Yep.
Because you did invite Mr. Beard to answer questions, we, we could invite him up.
Mike Beard, Clapsettle Garber. I do have a couple exhibits I'd like to just share with you, seeing you've given me the podium. What you see before you really is we've put the project into three divisions. The blue is the, the new hangar, the 120 by 100. The red is the new terminal building. You can see kind of the outline in red of the- You can see kind of the outline in red of the current terminal building that will be removed. And then clear over to the left is the electrical vault. Part of the challenge as the design team, including Justin and Steve, we went through, and we're meeting every Wednesday until we're bringing this to bid. I mean, it's that complicated and it takes quite a while. We went through several cost savings opportunities, and some are more unanimously accepted than others. And so we'll work through that. And one of the concerns I had, yes, the budget did go from 1.5, actually, it started at 1.7 local when you approved the concept back in November of 18. But between Justin and I, we were at the local, somewhere between 1.7 and 1.5, and I'll take part of that blame, too. There just was some unknowns that we did encounter, and I guess we thought it was much better to come before you tonight than when we opened bids and then go, now what? So I know Bethany had asked the question at the last meeting, are we still within budget? And my answer was yes. And I still stand by that. The thing is, at that point, we said we did not know about the funding for the vault, and we have received $300,000 F A funding for that. So that helped a lot. The only thing that's pending is a very small grant application that'll come before you in April for the beacon. And that's going to be probably an ask of 40,000 to 50,000. But in the overall $3 million project, that's not going to make or break that. But we will bring some cost savings alternatives to as bid alternatives, and hopefully we can do that. Let me get to the next. How do I, Justin?
Mouse is right there, buddy.
Where do you? I don't drive very well.
Those are the other two.
Okay.
So whichever one you want.
Here is, just so we can understand that the big picture, I mean, it's been very, very important from day one to be able to house Emerson's jet. Here is Emerson's biggest jet in that facility. And you go, geez, it looks like it's too big. Well, the wingspan on this is 86 feet, and the door opening is 96 feet. So you've got five feet on either side of those wings. So it's still cozy, but there is a little bit of room there to be able to maneuver in there. And the one thing that we were able to successfully go through with the code review, and that took about six weeks, we were fearful that we might have to do a sprinkler system, which was not in the budget. And luckily, we've been able to work our way around that. The area in blue on there is a vestibule. That will be what will separate the hangar from the terminal building and eliminate the need for the sprinkling system. So that vestibule was probably 30,000 to 40,000. That really wasn't in the original numbers. But instead of 150 or 200 for a sprinkling system and new water mains and all that, we thought that was a pretty good option. The other, the pink area is the mechanical room. And we were trying to minimize the footprint we were taking up in the hangar with that. And we talked about at one point putting it above the vestibule. Code just really bit us on that. You had to have it separated, doors, and you'd have stairs. The stairs itself were going to take up more room than the footprint if you just left it on the ground. And it's a whole lot easier to deal with something that's here than put it up there. So that was a couple of things that we worked through there. The other thing that we actually came up with overnight is here is another option that we could do for the parking. If you recall, the circular drive that we have here, we were going to replace that whole thing. We could do a less expensive option that would provide the same amount of parking that you've got right now. And you would have, this would be for short-term parking, and then we would still have long-term parking over on the other side. We have not run the numbers to see what the cost savings difference is, but obviously it would save money. So as a design team, we haven't decided whether we like that or not. That literally evolved over the weekend. So anyway, we're trying really hard to provide you some options. We'll bring alternates, and then you can help us decide which ones, which ones you want to accept. So that's kind of where we're at.
Thank you.
Steve, anything? Okay.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Beard and all these up here?
I just had one, Mr. Mayor. On the length of the runways that will accommodate this size plane, I guess the question is, are they landing here now with that size plane?
I know the answer, but we'll let the airport manager.
Steve Albrecht, Airport Manager. Yeah, they do land here in good weather now. This time of year, we don't see them. They can't count on de-icing, so this hangar will serve that purpose. But it's within the capability of the aircraft to land here when the weather's good.
Okay.
So yeah, absolutely. We do see airplanes this size and actually bigger.
Reason I ask that is because I know what the, we have discussed the runway before and talked to people about buying property for length in the runway. And I guess that's part of the question of, are we building this big enough for the future? And also the runway. I know it's, as we try to build the city up, and obviously the factories with JBS and everybody else possibly could get bigger jets, but it's just a concern of that when you were talking about a larger jet, I just wanted to make sure that they were landing.
Yeah, our two biggest needs are runway length and the hangar. And they're both equal in their need. So we're able to tackle this with such a large investment from the F A and the state that it's the easiest first project to do. And then the runway, it is a need, but they're still able to get in when the weather is good. When the weather's bad, they're going to Newton or Ames, but when it's good, they're coming to Marshalltown.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Any public comment? Roll call.
Hoop?
No.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Very good. That carried as well. Onto the next item, please.
We have a public hearing followed by a resolution regarding the plan specifications, form of contract, and cost for the 2019 PCC Patch Repair Project.
I'll declare the public hearing is now open, and the time is 6:08 PM. Did the clerk's office receive any written comments?
No, Your Honor.
Next is time for public comments. Next is time for staff review.
Jay Cook with Engineering Department. Basically, I'm just here today to progress along with the two projects that we have going. The first one is 2019 PCC Patch Repair Project. Basically, we just need approval on that one to continue with the project.
Can you give us the area that this will be done in?
Okay. The area includes Marion Street between 7th Avenue and 3rd Avenue, Highway 14. It also includes 18th Street, Avenue, sorry, 18th Avenue from basically Highway 30 all the way down to, pretty close to Main Street. Then it also includes Lincoln Tower Circle.
Thank you.
Is it just a circle drive at Lincoln Towers?
Just the circle drive.
Out the street that runs behind it?
Just circle drive.
Okay.
Other questions or comments? Well, that was staff review. Now time for council comments. If there aren't any others, I'll declare the public hearing is closed at the time of 6:09 PM. Is there a motion to approve that resolution?
I move for approval.
I'll second.
Discussion up here. I guess we could allow public comment even after we've closed the hearing. Is there any public comment? Seeing no one rushing to the microphone, let's vote.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Thank you. That carried. Onto the next resolution, then.
We have a public hearing followed by a resolution for the South Third Street Bridge Repair Project.
I'll declare that public hearing open at 6:10. Did you receive any written comments?
No, Your Honor.
Are there any public comments? Now time for staff review.
Again, I'm just here for public hearing for the resolution approving of the plans and specifications, form of contract for the South Third Street Bridge Repair. This project is a approximate cost of around $114,000. It includes basically the repair of the joints that are in the bridge, the expansion joints to basically allow us to prevent further erosion down below the bridge, which also includes some stabilization of those embankments. One thing, I did issue an addendum today, basically clarifying the street work, that if at all possible, the contractor will maintain traffic, two-way traffic through the bridge at all times.
Thank you. Any council comments?
Your Honor, I'm wondering, how do you, how likely do you think that is, that we'll be able to? And how long do you expect the project will take?
From the engineering that's doing the structural portion of it, they're saying that the seals will take approximately a day apiece to install. And it should only affect the two outer seals, so it'd be two days. However, along with the addendum, I did require them that when they are not working, that they will have two-lane traffic open. So I would anticipate if there is a closure, it won't be longer than two days. And like I said, it will be open over the nighttime period for traffic.
Other council comment?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Once approved, what's the timeline? What's the possible timeline if we go ahead with this resolution?
We opened bids on the third, and we plan on coming back to the council meeting following that for approval of those bids. And then I would anticipate that we would probably be starting somewhere around the first of June.
Okay. Thank you. Did I hear somebody else start to ask a question?
Oh, I think I started to, and I'm not sure I have it now. Sorry.
Okay. Anyone else?
So am I understanding, I just want to put all the pieces together, it'll start about the first of June and go for about two days?
Two days to install the seals.
Mm-hmm.
And that would be the only time that the bridge would be closed.
Okay. Okay.
The remaining work could take anywhere from probably three to five weeks.
Okay.
But that won't affect the closure of the bridge.
So we wouldn't even be down to two lanes for three to five weeks?
Oh, no.
Okay. So it's, that's kind of the under the bridge work that'll be done? Yes. Okay. Great. Thank you.
If you have a collapse like they had up in the Twin Cities, it's a lot longer to get it back and running.
I think my question related to what is the detour around there? High Street to back to Center? And I'm just trying to think if it was closed. I know that that intersection at Madison and 3rd Street is highly used, lots of traffic through there. So I was just trying to picture what a closure of that would look like.
They would pretty much be required to use High Street to go over to Center Street, or they could possibly use the Sixth Avenue, or I'm sorry, the Sixth Street crossing over the railroad tracks. However, that's going to depend considerably on whether there's a train there or not, which having, living on that side of the tracks, there's a lot of trains.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And the contracts do require that it is accessible to emergency vehicles at all times.
Okay. Good.
Any other questions or comments of the councilors? All right. I'll declare the public hearing is closed at 6:15 PM. Is there a motion to approve?
I move for approval.
Second.
Further discussion up here or out there? Roll call.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop? Yes.
Very good. That one carried as well. Thank you, Jay. Next item, please.
Resolution setting public hearing prior to approving the five-year capital plan for fiscal years ending 2020 through 2024.
I move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion?
Diana Steiner, Finance Director. So this agenda item and the next two all relate to the budget, so I just wanted to give a short recap of the budget process cycle. So in November and December, the directors started putting their budgets together and loaded it into our accounting software. We were basically maintaining status quo programs that we were running and adjusted a little for inflation. The directors met with the city administrator and me to review their individual budgets and make adjustments. And in December, the mayor and council members met with the city administrator and department directors to create a strategic plan. So this, through this process, we were then able to create the FY '21 budget and to amend any FY '20 budget items. When the county released the property tax valuations in late December, the tax levies and our revenue were computed. And so then we went back to the drawing board to look for more reductions in budget expenses and look for additional revenues that we could generate. Starting with the first council meeting in January through today, pieces of the budget were brought forth at every meeting for discussion and review with the mayor and council. This included drafts of the five-year capital improvement plan, keeping the property tax levy the same rate as last, as this current fiscal year, looking at the strategy for putting the general fund 001 in balance, looking at the debt schedule along with the debt capacity, et cetera. Changes were updated in our accounting software based on those council directives. The public has also had an opportunity for public comment during those council meetings. The reports provided to you today for this agenda item and the next two are an accumulation of those discussions and directives. With your approval tonight, a public hearing will be set for March 23, and the public notice will be published in the Times Republican newspaper sometime during the week of March 9. At the March 23 meeting, changes can still be made, but only if you were lowering the levy or lowering the budgeted expenses. From that meeting, final changes, if any, will be made to the budget documents. And then they will be given to the county auditor to be certified before March 31.
I forgot to ask whether there were any written comments on the clerk.
We're setting the hearing.
No, setting the hearing. Yeah. I don't have to follow my cheat sheet up here then. Any questions of Diana?
I have more to say.
Okay.
Okay. So you've seen this-
Can you talk as fast as a car salesman?
I will try. Okay. So this is the plan that we, that you've seen before. So again, Fund 030 and Fund 032 are funded by property taxes. So you can see our $503,000 in Fund 30, and in Fund 032, it's $107,000. So these are just regular equipment purchases, park improvements, et cetera, that are funded by property taxes. You will notice other revenues, we put in $3,000 for interest, and we did put in backfill of $16,606. The state has not appropriated money at this point in time for the backfill, but we are hopeful they will. So.
As I recall a memo recently, it looks like that is, we're being encouraged to think that might happen this year?
Yes. It was in the governor's recommendation, but it has not come out of, the amount has not come out yet. They could appropriate at any level, basically. The other report I provided to you was the debt capacity report. So- So with the discussion you just had about the airport hangar, we did increase that from 1.5 to 1.725 million dollars. You can see that we're still within the council-designated 60% limit at the end of fiscal year '21. You'll notice that by fiscal year '22, we will be over that capacity, but we're not putting together the regular budget for fiscal year '22 tonight. It's just a capital improvement plan. So you will have to make decisions about either lifting that limit of the 60% or reduce your bonded amount. Is there any questions on the capital improvement plan? If not, you will need to approve the hearing date on March 23rd.
Okay, let's vote to do that.
Thompson?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thank you. That carried as well. Unless I offend any of my friends who are car salesmen, I get told by court reporters to slow down all the time as a lawyer. Next item.
Resolution setting the public hearing prior to approving the budget for fiscal year ending June 30, 2021, and certifying the property tax levy.
I move for approval.
Second.
Discussion?
Diana Steiner, Finance Director. So we're going to go over this certification sheet. So up at the top, it talks about our taxable valuations. So compared to last year, our regular valuations increased by $26 million. That is with the gas and electric utilities. Without the gas and electrics, our valuations increased by $18 million. And the ag land increased by $819,000. So of course, these valuations play into the rate and the dollars we can collect. So our regular general levy is $8.10. That's what almost every city in the state requests. This can be used for any general fund purpose. The next item is the transit department. So they do need supplement in order to maintain their operations. Their rate is going to be 30 cents. The maximum that it can be is 95, so we are well within that. This will leave them a fund balance of about $50,000 in case there's any emergency repairs of the bus. The next line is the operation of the Civic Center, which is the Fisher Community Center. That rate is at 11 cents. That limit is the amount necessary, so we are fine there. That is just in and out. We collect the property tax revenue, and then we have a contract with Fisher Community Center for $100,000, so that's just in and out. The next line down is the liability and property insurance. So that's for equipment, property, and general liability insurance. Again, that's at 19 cents, and we could request up to the amount necessary. We do not have our renewal policy amount yet. That comes in April, but we're estimating it. Now, the next line is the support of the local emergency management. They increased their fee by 4% this year, so we increased our amount requested. Again, this is just in and out. We collect the money. We turn it over to Marshall County Emergency Management. The next items are voted items on voted items. So the first one is the Marshall Town Community Band. We're requesting $11,000. This is a little over one cent for the rate. We could go up to 13.5. So that's that one. And then the public did approve a rate of 27 cents for the library. So that's the maximum that we can request. All ag land, we're at $3, so we requested that. The emergency amount is anything that we need over the $8.10 levy. So we did request the full amount on that, the 27 cents. That can also be used for anything in the general fund. The next item is police and fire retirement. That's the amount necessary that we need for retirement for fire and police staff. Next item is FICA and IFRS. Again, the amount necessary. And then other employee benefits would be health insurance, workers' comp, et cetera. And that's also the amount necessary. So coming down here, the debt service levy, we're going to go into detail, more detail in just a little bit. But that is $1.07. Last year, it was $1 even. And then capital projects, as I discussed in the CIP portion, $0.67. That's the maximum amount that you can take. So overall, we would generate $12.2 million in property tax revenue, and the difference between these two money is what we get for the utility excise tax, which is about $1.6 million. The most important thing about this sheet is the levy rate. So through your direction, you've decided to keep the levy rate the same. So again, it's $15.38434, same as this current fiscal year. This sheet just kind of gives you a fund balance report of where the cash balances would be at the end of fiscal year '21. So it gives you fiscal year '19, fiscal year '20, and fiscal year '21. And how these are broken up is if you look on the cash sheet that I provided to you, you can see how they're broken out. So anything that starts with a zero is the general fund. Anything that starts with, any fund that starts with a one is special revenues, 200s is the debt fund, et cetera. So that's how this all plays out. This is your fiscal year '19, your net activity for fiscal year '20, your ending balance for fiscal year '20, your net change in fiscal year '21, and your ending balance in fiscal year '21. So it kind of tells you a story of how the funds are going. This is a sheet that's required. It just tells you how much we're going to request for the Marshall County Emergency Management Commission. So then, this next sheet is for fiscal year '20. So as we were putting the budgets together for '21, we are also adjusting fiscal year '20. And the next agenda item is the budget amendment for this, but you can see all the detail on this sheet. So I outlined in my memo on the next agenda item for the budget amendment, what are the changes. So to be quick, I'm just going to go through this. Again, we're reestimating our fiscal year '20 revenues, which I also outlined in the next budgeted agenda item. Okay, so for fiscal year '21, these are, again, all the accumulation of all those reports that I've given you before. Expenses. And then there's a sheet for the revenue. And then this is just an adopted budget summary. So you can see fiscal year '21 over here. And then you can see our reestimated for this current fiscal year, and then what we actually had last fiscal year. Okay, this is the long-term debt schedule. So in order to maintain the current rate, you did say that we could contribute $173,797 out of local option sales tax in order to keep the rate the same. So just a couple other items. On row 13, this is the new bond that we just did in December. So it was $5.6 million for new programs, and the remainder was refunding of a sewer revenue bond. That way, we could save interest. And then on line 20, on line, yes, line 20. Those were also refunded bonds, so $5,65,000. We refunded those to get a better interest rates. But in your budget system, you have to show the revenue and expenses going in and out. So it does look a lot, like our budget's a lot higher than it actually is. We had to pay off the old bond amount, which is shown as an expense. And then we also had $3.5 million in the state revolving fund. That was new this year also. So the local option sales tax, 78% of that is spent for debt relief. So we were budgeting $3.4 million. So you can see that 78% is $2,652,000, so that bought that levy rate down as well. The extra money coming to pay the remainder is in our fund balance, because in this fiscal year, we are projecting a higher amount for local option sales tax. So that will not come out of council-designated, but it will just come out of the regular property tax relief. And then here is the sheet that will be published in the paper, again, showing our rate staying the same, and then all of our revenues and expenses by fiscal year. So in addition, I printed new reports that just give a summary by fund of the revenue and expenses. More of the detail was given to you in the January and February meetings. Oh, and I need to tell you one other thing about that. Okay, Marshall Town Water Works is included in our budget as well. So on the very last page, you can see their portion. Their board approved their budget last week. So you can see down here, their amounts that they're putting in, that we're including on our budget. Same thing with the cash sheet. At the very bottom in the cash sheet is also their cash balances. And then we have the FY '21 transfers. So anytime you're going to move money from one fund to the other, it's not considered a new expense. You're just transferring the money between funds. So I have outlined that. So hopefully, it's pretty self-explanatory, but do you have any questions for me?
Diana?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Thompson?
Not sure if this is appropriate or not, so please correct me if I'm wrong, but since we're speaking budget, there's two issues, I think, need to be emphasized for the public. One is, their taxes are going to go up. Their property tax is going to go up, but we held our part of it the same, because the valuations went up, correct? The county's assessments?
I do not know what the other taxing bodies are going to request.
You don't have that yet? Okay.
We don't have anything to do with that. It's their own.
And then the other question was, do we have a final number on the police station yet? I know the public are still asking about that, the police-fire station. Do we have that?
I can produce a report for the next meeting.
Because I don't know if everything's been, has everything been closed out yet, or do you know of anything?
No, it's still open. There's still repair work to be done.
Do you have a timetable at all?
Justin?
Probably the bigger outstanding item is our ongoing resolution to come from our Mason. As far as the timeframe, I do not have an outcome on that. We still have not paid the final bill to the bond company that stepped in and took the place of the Mason. And we are still working on negotiating the terms of what they do get paid as opposed to what our damages were.
Timetable?
I don't have a timetable. It's unbearably slow. How about that?
The thing that I'll add in is, the attorney for the bonding company does not seem to be placing a high priority on getting this resolved. And so that's where we're dependent upon communication from them, and it's not been something that they've been very communicative on.
In past professional experience, I can tell you, you should continue to predict that.
Thank you.
There is one correction I need to inform you of. Let me get to the right page. It doesn't change the amounts, but they added a new line this year called TIF rebates. So some of this amount needs to come down here, so it's just going to be split. The total doesn't change. So in fiscal year '20, the amount for the TIF rebates will be $204,45. And then this amount will become $31,475. So in total, it is the same. And same thing for fiscal year '21. This amount will go away, and the amount in this row will be $194,785, and the amount in this row will be $82,000. So when you're talking about budgets, as a whole, we have to maintain the total of this program. So there's nine different programs. So it doesn't matter whether we spend more in fire or police, or whether it's general fund or special revenues, as long as it stays in total within this section. So for those of you that are new, don't know that I said that before, so. Any other questions for me?
Diana, I do appreciate how you go back and remind us that we've seen these before. And again, that certainly helps put it all in perspective. So thank you very much for the way that you're keeping us all informed.
You're welcome. And hopefully, you'll read my memos that go with it, because that's when I explain the changes.
Yeah, the longer I've been on the council, the more I've increased my appreciation for the work you do. Thank you.
So we will need to set a public hearing.
So we have a motion for the resolution 049. Warren moved, seconded by Goudy.
Roll call.
Warren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Very good. That carried as well. I think that takes us on to the discussion items under category H.
We have a resolution number 10.
Oh, I missed that one. I'm sorry.
Resolution setting public hearing prior to approving the amended budget for fiscal year ending June 30, 2020.
I move for approval.
Second, Your Honor.
Discussion on this one?
Diana Steiner, Finance Director. Again, all those sheets that we just talked about, the reestimated FY '20 budget, are incorporated into this form. I did outline the changes in my memo of why we're changing. Like I said, we did get bonds, so I have to show that as additional revenue in the other financing line. And then the payoff of the old ones are either coming through the business-type expenditures for the sewer revenue or through the capital projects. Well, we didn't refund anything for capital projects. So the payoff of the old loan is the business type. And again, Marshall Water Works is included. This will be published in the paper as well for the public hearing on March 23rd. Do you want me to go through the changes? If not, do you have any questions?
Anyone request that we go through them? I don't see anybody raising a hand up here.
So we just need to set the public hearing.
Let's vote.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Got one carried as well. Now on to item H. Sorry to keep rushing everybody. The first discussion item is city-ordered sidewalk repairs.
Yes, with the approval of the ADA self-evaluation and transition plan, I'll pull up my memo so you can kind of see the map there and what that looked like. But there was, ahead of the maps, there was kind of a summary sheet which gave a general summary of sidewalk conditions throughout the city. And you'll notice at the bottom, the not accessible condition, there are 7.2 miles within the city. Ultimately, we haven't done any data mining to go through and figure out where those are. I can't tell you, I think some of it is part of our trail, actually, and so I think we have planned to bond $250,000 here after July 1st. And so, we would be looking to address our own needs as we would be looking to order repairs for others. So, I've placed the code section that allows the city to order sidewalk repairs. It is the adjacent property owner's responsibility to replace them. And so, you know, it's, it's been discussed many times that, you know, we need to start enforcing parts of our ordinances, and we are proposing that we would start the enforcement related to that 7.2 miles, with exceptions being no notices to owners who will have a sidewalk replaced in the city project through 2022, so within the foreseeable future. And then, and there's going to be two areas, well, there's, there's still three areas where we have stumps yet to remove, and that if there is an area where a stump needs to be removed in order to facilitate a sidewalk being repaired, that we would hold on that notice until we had actually had the stump removed. So, we're proposing something that is probably very generous compared to what we'd probably be able to do in the past, that I think we'll be able to have notices ready to go out by March 31st, and then look at putting a compliance timeframe of five months in, in that letter, which is a, a pretty lengthy amount of time for what we would normally give for compliance. What this actually does on the back end is it, because we, we're not expecting compliance from everybody, it does leave us the ability to put together our own sidewalk improvement project, put that out to bid, and hopefully have it done before the end of the year, and then assess those property owners if they do not pay the bill that we would send them for that work. So, that's kind of where things are at. The other thing that I just wanted to bring attention to, because it was some things that happened prior to the tornado just get lost in the shuffle, and this was one of them. Ultimately, the council did approve a resolution allocate, or putting forward a incentive program of 50% of the cost, not to exceed $500. There was only a allocation for one fiscal year. It was to come from road use tax, which was not the appropriate funding source. And so, if the council would like to sort of keep this incentive program for partial reimbursement of city-ordered sidewalk improvements, we could bring a resolution to the next council meeting using council-designated local option sales tax as the funding source for that, and you could cap it at whatever amount you wanted to cap it at. So, the purpose of the discussion is we, we want to make sure that, because this is going to generate multiple complaints, and that we're all on the same page as council and staff, that this is, this is how we are going to proceed in order for us to start moving forward with some of the improvements needed in the ADA transition plan.
Comments or questions up here?
I think, I think we could try this incentive program, and maybe that, I, I don't know where we arrived at $30,000 for the budget that one year, the tornado summer, but that might be a good place to start, see how it goes. I'm wondering, I, five months is probably good, because if people don't get on it right away, it can be difficult to find somebody to get concrete poured sometimes. There are lots of projects going on, lots of projects in Des Moines that people here are working on, so I know that it's, it can be hard to find somebody to do a professional job. And in order to apply for this program, it needs a city inspection and to be approved by the city. So, I think that's, that's, those are probably the right criteria for the program.
Was there a map that outlined where the majority of the sidewalks were?
So, that would be if the ADA transition plan is still open, I think it is. It's in Part II, and it's 21 pages of maps. And so, we can kind of, I'll get you through the first few, so you can kind of start to So, this is the summary map. So, each of these pages has corresponding, so 21 sort of map pages that follow that utilize these symbols on them. And so, I think just in the, in the first one here, yeah, you can see North Center Street and North Second Street has, has some properties highlighted there. I think it's when you get to the next one, you can start to see our trail connection right here is, is marked as not accessible. And so, there's, there's, they're just kind of scattered throughout. We'll have Bolton and Minx GIS person pull out basically anything that was highlighted and read to give, to make it easy for us to process that information and how that works to send out notices and things. But it's, it's truly, these are, these are sidewalks scattered throughout the city. It's not like they're concentrated in one specific area.
Other questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I guess I'd like to see if we are going to do an incentive from local option, local option sales tax, I'd like there to be only used by the people that have a, meet an income barrier requirement. I can't see us helping someone who has the means to fix their sidewalk, you know, versus someone who doesn't have the financial means to fix their sidewalk. And at the same time, I know we're supposed to treat all taxpayers the same. There's a lot of property owners that don't have sidewalks, so those should be added to that not accessible category of how many hundreds of miles that is. Why can't we incorporate something in this that we've batted this, you, previous councils have batted this around for years? You know, if we're going to be a walkable city, all those neighborhoods that don't have sidewalks need to put them in. And I think the simplest way is incorporated into this, that when the property sells, if they do not have a sidewalk, that's when it goes in, if property transferred, it'd be an easy way for us to track that. So, I'm hoping that we can do something like that, and I know it's going to be a hodgepodge, you know, at first, but if we would have started this 10 years ago, pretty much the, the housing is flipped over, we would have sidewalks. So, I look at this like sprinkler systems downtown. You know, you have a hodgepodge of sprinkler systems, you know, one building has one, one doesn't. You know, let's start doing those sidewalks, let's start getting them put in. If we don't start, we're never going to get it. So, that's, that's my feelings on it. Let's, let's do a financial assistance for those that have a requirement, and then also, let's put some teeth into this to get more sidewalks put in, you know, in some kind of fashion, in a regular timetable. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, to, to respond, one of the concerns that we, that I would have with income verification is that you all would need to set guidelines, and then people are going to have to turn in documentation, which an employee is going to have to review to determine eligibility. And so, if it's just an incentive that is available on a first-come, first-served basis, the administration is far less than, than if there's income qualification involved. So, I'm not saying that that's not possible to do, but I just want you to understand that that's going to create more work for somebody on the, on the back end within our existing structure to be able to do that. On the sidewalks on existing properties, we do have, and I should, I should have mentioned it in this, we do have a, an ordinance that requires sidewalks to be put in, in subdivisions, where I think it's after 10 years if the, the area's been subdivided, then the sidewalk is required to go in. Michelle has compiled a list of those properties, and so our intention is to move forward with those as well. What you're talking about with the requiring the installation of sidewalks after a property transfers, that I'm not sure is, is legal in our ordinances currently. The city council does have the authority to place sidewalks anywhere, which is where we're at currently. So, that's, that's really where, you know, it's more of a, because we're not thinking that these could be, these could be assessment projects, which requires six of seven of you to vote for something to be an assessment project, which can be something we have a future discussion on as well. That's where it's been the, the practice to, I should say, practice for like a year now, to borrow the money for, to, for us to make it a city project. But it is ordinance, it's the, it's the section that is right after the one that was in the, the memo, 53.08 sidewalks construction ordered, which says the city council may order the construction of permanent or temporary sidewalks upon any street or court in the city, and may specially assess the cost of such improvement to abutting property owners in accordance with the provisions of Iowa Administrative Code, Chapter 384. So, we can do some more looking into that, but it's been my understanding that it, it really does have to happen as an assessment project, that we can order construction anywhere, but it doesn't necessarily say who pays for it. So, but we can look at that further.
Other discussion up here? Public discussion?
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. As far as it is ordering everyone to put sidewalks in, sidewalk height is set by curb height. Many of the streets, such as the Country Club, don't have curbs to set the curb height and the sidewalk from. So, that'll be a cost to the city to put in curb and gutter on those roads, which, okay, maybe we need to do that. Just thought I'd let you know that.
Linda Clark, 306 South Second Avenue. We always want to work together, and when I hear words such as "forced," I get my dander up right away. I have lived on my property 70 years, and there has been, just like Mr. Thompson said, a hodgepodge of rules. I remember when the state code provided streets, city was responsible for those sidewalks and alleys. Now, you have changed the Marshalltown code so that the property owners are required and will be forced to maintain sidewalks. And just like Mr. Thompson pointed out, there are a number of places in the city. In a wonderful world, we would have sidewalks everywhere, but it doesn't work that way. And we have a lot of retired people in this town now, and I very much appreciated Mr. Thompson's comment about that. I remember many years ago when this "forced" was put in, and it was taken, and people fought it. And so, sitting in on the vision, I am in the 1%, because I am objecting to a lot of the things that are going on. My sidewalk has been state width forever, and it is fine, and it goes nowhere anymore. And I think the city needs to take care of the uptown. You worry about uptown. Get the sidewalks all up to snuff with the ADA things there. And I guess I'm speaking up, just like Mr. Thompson did, for the rest of the persons that have lived here as long as I have. We want Marshalltown better, yes, but we are getting limited with what funding we have to do these things. Thank you, and I hope I smiled well. Thank you for your time.
So, Leland Sales, 9/11, May, Marshalltown. I like your idea. There might be a compromise here, and the compromise would be something like looking at the distribution of, let's say, low-valued homes across the city, and that's going to follow something like ward lines or some other fairly clear distinction. So, if, if an incentive program were offered by address in a certain part of the city, that seems to me a nice compromise between what you're looking for and the staff burden that Jessica Kinsler wants to avoid.
Other public comment? Before going on to the next.
Well, I was going to say, there's really, I'm not feeling any resolution to this issue, and so this, this really does need direction of what, whether or not you want us to move forward. Do you want to bring a resolution refunding that incentive? What would you like us to do?
Anyone want to insert their two cents? We have been kicking this around since I got on the council seven years ago.
And we have data now. That was really one of the points of the ADA self-evaluation, was that we, we needed data to be able to start this process.
I have a couple of concerns on, and I don't feel we've resolved how we want to, if we want to put an incentive out, how we want to administer it. And I'm not sure, I've heard anything, you know, do you do a first-come, first-served basis? Do you do an income basis? Do you do a property location basis? I would think we'd need to look at the legality of all of those to see if we can, how that works out equitably within our community. That's one concern. So, so I don't, I'm not sure how to even ask you to proceed. I would think if we are going to proceed, we definitely do need to provide some incentive because I, I think that this will be, as, as people have stated, a burden on people, and we know that we will have people that find it very difficult to comply with, with the requests that we ask for that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
What would it cost us, the city, to replace the 7.2 miles?
I, I don't know that we would have an answer to that. I mean, we can come back to the, we can keep this on the agenda for the next meeting and come back with a ballpark on, on that one. I would just warn that it's going to set, if we start paying for, for one set of sidewalks to be replaced, it's going to create a potentially dangerous precedent moving forward if future council would try and not pay for somebody else's sidewalk to be replaced.
If, if I may, Mr. Mayor? Growing up in a neighborhood on the, this side of the tracks, you know, I understand precedents, but I also understand the obligation that the poorer side of town had with all these sidewalks. I mean, I mean, how many retired people and landowners paid to have them shoveled, and they had to repair them at their expense? You know, and now you have, you have landowners on the, the south side of town that don't even have a sidewalk. So, what have we already charged all of the older homes and towns? And if you want to look at it, what have the older homes and towns contributed to the property tax over 100 years versus a house that's only been on the south side for 50 years? I mean, there's a million ways to look at this. I don't think, the way it sounds, and like the mayor said, they, we've been batting this round for seven years. We've got to come to, if, we got to come to some kind of resolution on this. Thank you.
I guess I would suggest that there certainly have been some better practices in other communities, and I'd like to see some investigation of those with an eye to equity and implementation. Ultimately, it comes down to some public safety issues and liability issues for that matter, both with public sidewalks and private. So, I guess I would like to see what others have done in our fairly direct survey, and have that information along with whatever else to enhance our discussion.
And I, I'll have to go back, but I believe when we created that incentive back in 2018, that we had done some research at that point to, to pull some things together. So, I'll, I'll go back and look back at that point and see what I can find to email out to all of you.
This is my day-to-day job is liability issues for things like this. It's pretty rare to have a municipality owning any sidewalks just about, well, and every city I know of in the state of Iowa does put the responsibility on the owners of the land, but the sidewalk, not on the city. It's also an area, it's, there are not many awards for the plaintiffs that trip and fall on sidewalks unless they're icy or snowy, even if they have rises. sidewalks unless they're icy or snowy, even if they have rises. I couldn't tell you what the statistics are, but probably around 5% or 10% of the people that are injured or bring a lawsuit actually end up recovering. Most people think we have to watch out for where we're walking. But I agree, it would be good to know what the best practices are in other cities and how they enforce it. I think the city was asleep at the switch back in the '40s, '50s, '60s, '70s, whenever we allowed all the developments without any sidewalks.
And one more thing, Mr. Mayor?
You bet.
What if our incentive program is to fix the 7.2 miles to get that category taken care of? Because you have the map that shows what 5% are not accessible. So, what if our incentive program is to use local option sales tax, fix the 7.2 miles, and then put some teeth into a resolution for all of the, you know, the first three categories? I guess it'd be second and third. The first one, you know, the 27.3 miles, it's fine, and then put some teeth into that. We'll fix the worst. We'll get everything up to, you know, that's our incentive. So, that's where I need that cost.
We can probably come up with some estimate.
I was going to say, well, it'll be very, very general because this won't have been an assessment of each parcel. That was not, that's probably not something that we can do by March 9th. So, like, that's where we wouldn't have a scope of work on each property by March 9th to be able to tell you exactly, like, a more planning-level cost. We can give a broad estimate of 7.2 miles of five-foot width. I mean, that's probably where we're at in terms of assessment.
And, Mr. Mayor?
Hmm.
May I?
You may.
So, yeah, if we can get an estimate from some concrete companies that, let's say the average fix is 10 feet long, and we have 7.2 miles total, what's that cost? I mean, obviously, it's cheaper to lay 7.2 miles in one run.
And what the engineering department will do is they'll figure up a lineal foot quantity and then basically use what quantities that they have, or use what costs that they have seen on other bids, basically coming back in city projects and things. So, yes.
Just a few years back, we had a sidewalk committee who did a whole lot of studies and maps and all this, and we set aside five years of money to put sidewalks in, and it lasted one year. The Meadow Lane Street got a sidewalk, and then it disappeared. So, this has all been hasted over before. You just need to find that sidewalk committee's findings and resurface that.
And so, we did, so, two years ago, and I can find the packet to bring you all up to speed, but two years ago, we did a comprehensive review of everything that the sidewalk committee had done, which they had last met in 2008, and their work wrapped up in 2008. And then there were some actions in later years where the council decided not to act upon putting those in. And so, in 2018, it was the council saying, "We need to put a renewed emphasis on sidewalks." And so, there were kind of two things that we did at that point. One, we looked at gaps, and what we came forward with was like a sidewalk gap prioritization, of which 12th Avenue was the first one that's there. And so, that project will be coming back before you, probably at some point in the near future, for any action that it would require from you. The second one was related to a few elementary schools. I want to say Anson Elementary and Fisher Elementary, which you have included tentatively in the budget for borrowing for this next year. So, or actually, I should say, we borrowed some money in this past fall for a project that I'm not going to remember next year, is the schools. And so, that's kind of where we are. We've been borrowing money for sidewalk projects, and that is sort of the intention, and that is the gap prioritization part of it. And that is built into the capital improvement plan that was before you tonight, and will be back before you again on March 23rd. We then basically looked at what codes do we have that required sidewalks to be put in by certain points, and ultimately, we have that list developed, as I said. Michelle was able to put together that data, and so, that was where we were planning on moving forward with that. What we also have is now discretion that is applied where if the city deems that, you know, we gave a waiver or deferment on a sidewalk at some point to an entity or to an individual property owner, but something has happened around them now where that waiver no longer makes sense, we have the right now to come back and order that sidewalk to be put in. And that was a list that was also being looked at, was were there any waivers or deferments where it now made sense that they be put in? This was sort of that final piece, that last piece of, we had no data other than just citizen-generated complaints as to where, what property might not have a sidewalk that was accessible or had a sidewalk with some condition issues that needed to be repaired. And so, part of the ADA transition plan was having those interns go through and basically do an assessment of every sidewalk that existed in town. And if you read the ADA transition plan, there is a piece, I believe in the introduction, that says that one of the difficulties that they ran into is that there are areas where it's hard to judge accessibility because sidewalk's just dead end, and there's no continuation. And so, this is really that fourth and final piece where we've started to implement the gaps and filling the gaps, and then now we're really looking on the other side where it's existing sidewalks and repair of existing sidewalks. So, this has been something that was very comprehensively looked at back in 2018, and it's just gotten derailed a little bit by the tornado and some other things where it's kind of this final piece is just coming before you tonight to say, are we ready to move on it? So, but ultimately, we can bring this back to the March 9th meeting for discussion and try to have a very, very broad estimate, as well as some information on other city practices. But I will go back and see if I can find that packet of information that we handed out back in 2018, because it did have all the minutes and things from that sidewalk committee, as well as some council minutes kind of describing how that work kind of came to an end. So, that's kind of where we're at. We used what we could from the 2008 work, but ultimately, that was so limited in its scope, we needed something bigger to really be able to move forward with looking at walkability and accessibility.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
As the only council member up here that does not own a vehicle, and I walk everywhere in town, I don't want to see this go another seven years, you know? And if you need me to map any more sidewalks, I can do it every day. Yeah, I would appreciate if you could come back with something. We've got to get this resolved. I mean, this is, so, thank you.
I interject, just one thing, because I recall that, because we've kicked this around for as long as I've been here, six years. But one of the stumbling blocks I could remember that, on the gap part of it, was the width, because now we've got four-foot old sidewalks, and we're required to put in five-foot wide. So, all of a sudden, we've got a sidewalk in front of, we'll say, my house, because it was in this other park that we only did one year. But I could possibly have a four-foot sidewalk for 95% of my front yard and have one section five-foot wide.
So, that's where each property is going to have to be looked at in individual scope. I will tell you that we have a good example of how four-foot and five-foot sidewalks have come together on South Center Street with the Highway 14 project. Each of those curb ramps met the DOT requirement of being five-foot, but anywhere that there was an existing four-foot sidewalk, they basically did a panel that was decreasing it down to that size, so it's not a hard drop. So, I would encourage you that if you're able to check out South Center Street and you can see the way that the DOT designed that, and ultimately, that's what we would be encouraging property owners to do for transition points.
But, Mr. Mayor?
Hmm.
I think what the councilman is suggesting is if he has to replace a 10-foot section in the middle of his yard, is he obligated to put a five-foot section in the middle? You know, what is the law? How does the law read? If I've got an existing four-foot wide across my whole property, my 80 feet, but right in the middle I've got a stump came out, do I have to put a five-foot little block right there?
Yeah, I think for one panel, no. Ultimately, I think the ADA requires that there be one five-foot passing panel every 200 feet? One, 10 feet? 150 feet. So, yeah, so that would be where you would be looking at that in the whole of somebody's property. So, if you had 150-foot width of property and you needed to replace that one panel, then yeah, that would probably need to be a five-foot panel to comply with ADA so that you had your one passing panel within that span. So, that's where there's going to be, it's not a cut-and-dry on any of this. There's going to have to be review of what those scopes look like for individual properties if we get that far.
Not sure you have any real direction about how far to push this?
Well, we're going to come back with this as another discussion item on the March 9th meeting.
Okay. Very good. Onto vacant lots.
Yes, there are three vacant lots that we have resulting from demolitions where there has been contact from at least one entity or individual who is interested, and I can't see where we have a need to keep these, and that ultimately, our goal should be to return these to the tax rolls if we have no benefit for them. So, there is, on all three of these, the item remaining with our demolition contractor to seed the properties, which will be occurring in the spring here when seeding can be done. But otherwise, I am proposing that we would put out for a sealed bid, 712 East Boone Street, 401 and 1/2 May Street, and 105 North Sixth Street. The one thing that, beyond, you know, your permission to do that, would be wanting to know if you wanted to set a reserve for any of those parcels.
Let me first ask if anybody has an objection to selling those lots? Okay. Second, does anybody have an opinion about the reserve idea?
I have no idea what the value of adjoining properties would be to even think about. I mean, what a lot in an area would go for. Do we need to get an opinion on that in those areas if we want a reserve, or are we willing to sell it for $50? I mean, that becomes the question.
What I can tell you is each time it has snowed, it's cost us, I think, 40 bucks to have each of these properties shoveled, and we're coming upon mowing season where every time the property is going to get to be 10 inches, we would be having to mow it as well. So, my thought would be that there is more cost to us by holding it, and that my recommendation would be to not do a reserve, that I think that's going to be the best-case scenario for us to just move these lots.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
In lieu of sealed bids, can we solicit the free services of an auctioneer and have it held right here, all three properties in a public auction, so we don't give the lots away? We maximize it through an auction process?
That's certainly an option.
And that would, I guess that would solve your reserve problem. We'd max out, you know, we'd publish it?
Well, you'd still have to, if you're doing an auction, you'd still have to identify a reserve. So, that would be part of publishing a form of bid and reserve.
I'm saying no reserve.
Yeah.
Let the auctioneer, if it starts at a buck, you know, and that's what they go for, then so be it.
My thought would be, though, if you're willing to say that you would set an auction with no reserve, then why wouldn't that apply in another sales process?
Well, I think a live auction would generate a higher dollar than a sealed bid. Maybe I'm wrong. I mean...
If there's very few, if it's only one person that wants this property, I'm not sure that would be the best way to address it. Again, I hate not having any kind of a reserve, but if we could come up with a reasonable reserve that we could live with, I guess that would be my thought. But again, I don't know what that reasonable reserve is.
Might not hurt to consult a Realtor or two to find out what they would think in this area would work out the best.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I guess I misunderstood. Have we only had one person show an interest?
There's 105 North Sixth, there's two people that have shown an interest, but one is not located in this state, basically. So, that's where, yeah, I'm not expecting that there would be, that would be the only one that I would expect there'd potentially be more than one bid on.
Does the public know we have properties for sale? Would there be more interest if the public knew?
I mean, potentially. You know, this is basically our first discussion of it. You know, we've publicly acquired all of these, but the demolitions were really just done back in December, and as I said, there's still the contingency of getting the lots seeded. I will say, as we've talked about these vacant lots that we've had demolitions on before, in the time that I've been here, we have not had a reserve on any of them or used an auction process. Not saying that that doesn't mean that those are things that you shouldn't be considering, but for historical context, that's where we've been.
I move that we set a reserve at $1,000.
Too high. There we go.
What's the average sales price for the others that we've sold this way?
One sold for $5,000 with one bid being received for it. I think the most recent one that we did was 108 North 7th, and it was like $539. And then I want to say that there's maybe been one or two others that were less than that.
Minimal, yeah. So, are these buildable lots?
Yes, all of them are buildable. However, none can hold an accessory building on their own. They would have to contain a house in order to have an accessory building.
Mr. Mayor?
Hmm.
Is that...
Motion on the floor.
Is that even, if the adjoining landowner buys the vacant lot, they still can't put an accessory building on it when it's combined, if the same owner owns the lot the house is on and then buys a vacant lot next to it?
They would have to do an affidavit of non-separation, which basically meant that neither parcel could be sold separately in the future, and that's something that's recorded and stays with the property.
That makes sense. I didn't hear a second of the motion. Is there any other motion to give direction to the staff?
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
I propose, following the recommendation of Jessica, and advertising those properties and go through a sealed bid process and get them back on the tax rolls. That was the intent of this whole demolition project in the beginning. That was part of it, anyway. So, I support Jessica's recommendation, and that is my motion.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Get it going.
Any other discussion up here or out there?
Good evening. My name is April Long, 9/11, May Street in Marshalltown. Two of these lots are located not very far from where I live. I used to work in the construction field. I recognize that Marshalltown has a need for some houses. There's a housing shortage. These are good building lots, from what I've seen around town. I don't know currently what the average empty building lot is, but my guess is it would be at least $5,000 to buy a lot to build on. All of these could have affordable houses built on them. I would urge the council to have the reserve be a minimum of $5,000, and absolutely let the public know that they are for sale. I know that they've been torn down, but I didn't know that the city was offering them for sale. And I would hazard a guess that most of the community does not know that these lots are for sale. I think a $5,000 building lot is a bargain if we want people to build some affordable housing in town. So, I would urge you to do a $5,000 minimum and do some advertising and let the community know that these lots are available, and let's definitely get them back on the tax rolls. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Roll call.
Hoop?
What am I voting on with all the conversation?
Following the recommendation of City Administrator Kinzer and advertise with sealed bids.
Without any minimum?
With no minimum.
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Okay, you have your direction, good. Last discussion item is on elected official wages.
Yes, this was an item that was in our strategic plan to look at. Jill Petermeyer, our HR Director, pulled our comparable cities to kind of show where Marshalltown's salary for mayor and council ranked compared to others, but then we also looked at, when was the last time that council and mayor wages were adjusted? And that actually was on January 1st, 2006, where that took effect, to go to the current of $3,000 a year for council and $7,500 a year for mayor. And so, as you can see from the comparable data, there is a disparity from where we are at, and pretty much the lowest-paid council members and next-to-lowest-paid mayoral position. So my understanding in conversations with all of you was that, you know, this was not an intended discussion to be the highest on that list, so I looked at what the average was, less Marshalltown in that, and the average would be $11,000 annually for the mayor and $5,500 annually for a city council member. So ultimately, if you would want to move forward with anything, it would have to be adopted by ordinance, and then it would not go into effect until the next election, and the next set of elected officials would be taking a seat. So January 1st of 2022 would be that next timeframe, so it is not something that directly impacts you right now, as you said, if you were to move forward with anything.
Do the other cities on the list have the same format of government that we have?
Burlington is the one on there that doesn't, so their mayor is basically determined from the council. So that's where it's kind of interesting, you see that whoever that selected person is from their city council only gets $600 more here to take on a lot more responsibility. So, but Burlington is the only one on that list that is different.
Isn't Burlington the one that had all of the fighting between the council and the mayor?
There have also been, yes, so there's probably, well, every one of those cities on that list has had that at some point.
But the others have a city administrator and then mayor and council?
Yes, there are strong mayor forms of government, and I believe mayor-council forms of government in Atonwa, Muscatine, Mason City, Fort Dodge, and Clinton. And Burlington also has a city administrator as well.
I have a couple of comments. When I ran for office, I did not know that there was a stipend involved, so it was a surprise to me at the second meeting when somebody walked up with a check and an envelope, and I said I didn't need it and I diverted it to United Way instead. And I'm not running again, so I do not have a dog in this light. I do think it would be good to attract good candidates, though, to get a good successor mayor.
Point of view, Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
As the presiding officer, yours to remain neutral on everything by the rules? Am I correct in that?
Well, I don't have a vote, but I do have an opinion, and I get to give that opinion, or at least my experience.
He can offer his opinion.
As to the stipend given the city council members, I think it would be a very good idea to increase that so that we can attract more candidates with more youth and more diversity. You're not doing this for the money, but it doesn't hurt, and for those that are borderline able to afford the extra time it takes, I think it would be a good idea. So that's my two cents worth.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
I concur with your opinions. I don't think there's one of us who went into it for any kind of compensation, however, it's been, what, 20 years? If I calculate that, no, not that much, 14 years since an increase, and I support consideration of an increase. Most of mine, the $3,000 a year, has gone to pay for my gas around town. We have some of the highest gas prices in the state. See heads nodding. So I probably will not benefit, so-called benefit from this, because I probably will not run either. So now is the time to look at it and to push this project forward.
Other input?
I would agree, and if I'm smiling is because of the past mayor, and I have gotten into this discussion many times over coffee, and that fact is true, there's actually five of us up here that is not going to benefit from this unless we rerun. You'll notice that we are out of office on the 21st or on the year 2021. This would not go into effect until January of 2022. So unless we win an election, we're voting, if we get to that, to get a raise, we would not actually benefit that without winning the election. So a vote of yes would be a vote of confidence for the future, where we're not actually, unless we win, and I don't plan on running again either. I'm a term-limit guy, this will be eight years, so that's my belief, and so with a vote of confidence, I would vote for this, but only because of the future. That's my two cents worth.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Is it my understanding, you know, you're making a point that the council member from Fourth Ward and myself would benefit from this, but isn't the law stated that it wouldn't take effect for the two of us until two more years after '22? Because you can't vote yourself a raise while you're sitting in office.
And so, no, it would go into effect across the board on January 1st of 2022 for anybody who would be in a seat at that point in time.
And I thought I'd read that Fort Dodge just did vote to do that. I wonder if this is the new figure or the old figure?
Your Honor, may I?
You may.
I'm against this. We all knew what it was when we ran. We can't balance the general fund right now, and now you're asking to put more burden on the general fund. The only way I could see supporting this is if we eliminate all the department heads and put all that burden on the city administrator, or vice versa, eliminate the city administrator and the department heads would report directly to a full-time mayor and use those wages to pay a mayor, a full-time mayor, and then additional pay for the council members. The only way I can see this is if it's a cost zero, I don't know how we tell a taxpayer, in my opinion, I don't know how we tell the taxpayers that we can't fix a pothole, but I'm going to make more money. Thank you.
I can share another story. About two weeks ago, I got a call from the Cedar Falls mayor, and he asked if he could come down and have lunch here, so it turns out he's a Rotarian, so we had lunch at Rotary. I spent an hour or two driving him around town. He was wondering about what to do if they get hit with another disaster like a flood or a tornado, and so I asked him what his stipend was. He gets paid over $95,000 as a mayor, and they have a full-time city administrator up there. Having been a mayor now for a year and a half or so, I can tell you that towns way smaller than ours have to have city managers, and going back to the old mayor form of government wouldn't work, even if I quit my full-time job and worked as hard as I could to understand municipal things, there is no way I could serve as a mayor without a city administrator. Just, that's been my personal experience and professional experience. But I am interested in what the other councilors think.
So I've never been interested in a pay increase, however, I think the mayor has made this case for probably four, at least four years, and other people too, that would like to run, and they understand that it's a commitment, they understand it's still basically a volunteer position, that this just covers some of those expenses that maybe a person wouldn't otherwise take on in their life. So, and since I will too be rolling off, and then it would come on, I feel much more comfortable saying yes to it. It's also not at all the highest in the state, it's still right in the middle, and I think it would help, and it's a, I did a quick calculation, I think it's about $18,500 more than what we're paid right now as a whole council, including the mayor, so that would be the increase per year, and I, that's, I don't think that's unreasonable at all. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would rather see increases go to our full-time staff than to the mayor and council.
I'll just throw something at that. The staff gets a raise every year, okay? It's my 13th year, and I understood when I did it, each and every time, of what the pay is. But the county officials that are elected get raises every year. So I guess why wouldn't the city elected officials get some form of compensation?
That said by the guy that donates the bike helmets and does a lot of things like that around town. Anybody else? How about public comment on this one?
I guess words tonight have been focusing for me. Linda Clark, 306 South Second Avenue. I always hear, "To get good people." I have considered a number of persons that have been on, the council, mayors, past, present, city administrators that have been here and have left. I have heard persons stand up here and they're told, "Oh, we have a good person that's volunteered his time to be a police officer for $1 a year." I do agree with Mr. Hoop with what he said. They know what they're getting when they come in. We're a town of 27,000 people. He, I appreciate it, anytime I ever had a question, he always had an answer for me, and others that I have approached, Mr. Nichols, anyone in this town. They know that I value Marshalltown, I haven't moved away. I consider I am a good person, and I think everyone that works up here works hard, and I want to thank all of you publicly for doing that. But I've sat here tonight and heard you say, "You're not going to run, you're not going to run." You know, there we go. So are we losing all of our good people? I'm not leaving Marshalltown. I am staying here. I am staying here. Born here, raised here, schooled here, and I do not plan to leave. But I keep hearing that word, "good people." We have a lot of good people in Marshalltown, Mr. Mayor, a lot of good people. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm April Long, 911 May Street. I have had the opportunity to meet and interact with a number of the city council people and the mayor. You are good people, nobody doubts that. So I live in a modest home, make a modest income, I got a very modest salary increase this year at my job. I will say, the previous job that I held for 18 and 1/2 years, I think I got two raises in that entire time, working full-time. So I live well within my modest budget. If I can't afford to purchase or do something, I don't. When I read in the newspaper about the proposed salary increases, my first impression was, "Are you kidding me? Your reason for raising the salaries is because other towns pay that much." As my mom used to say, "Would you jump off a cliff just because everyone else was jumping?" Well, this is a fiscal cliff as far as I'm concerned. The city seems to constantly borrow money from projects that many in the community feel are unnecessary while continually raising our property taxes to pay for those, or borrowing. The tax rate, at the rate you're going, I may well be taxed out of my home. If the city needs to borrow money for projects they surely can't afford, which you've discussed tonight, borrowing additional funds for projects, then we surely can't afford proposed salary increases. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Do you need direction from the council on this one?
I think, from what I heard, it sounds like this would be something to bring forward to the next meeting as a first reading of an ordinance.
I think so too. Very good. We are at that point now where it's time for public comment, and I'm supposed to read another similar proviso. Members of the public may comment on any item not on the agenda at this time. Approach the mic, state your name and address. Limit your comments to three minutes unless a longer comment is authorized by me. You shall direct your comments to the mayor and council as a whole. Mayor and councilors shall not engage in discussion or debate on items raised by members of the public, and no action may be taken on those items in order to comply with the open meetings law. The mic is open.
My name is Carlin Newton. I've been an RN at the Iowa River Hospice Home for 14 years. I'm calling, I've come to talk to you about the road that's supposed to go to the backyard of the Iowa River Hospice Home. My concern is for the patients and families, it's not for me. 100% of us are dying as we live. Sometimes it's known, and other times it surprises you. As the doctors tell you, you have six months or less to live. There are many, many variety of emotions and traumas and thoughts and experiences to deal with, not only the person who is dying, but the Iowa River Hospice cares for the family who is dealing with their own sets of losses. Everyone's journey is different, whether it is your grandparents, your parents, middle-aged and young adults, teenagers, children, or even infants. At Iowa River Hospice, we care for all who need our services. Everyone who walks through our doors are experiencing differing emotions, losses, as well as their lives will never be the same. They are processing their losses and preparing for how they are going to deal with their life in the future without their loved ones. We have had classes of schoolchildren of their classmates is the one who's dying, and the families and friends have come to Iowa River Hospice to say their goodbyes to these people. Iowa River Hospice is a home that is not just a building, it is a home that helps care for patients when families break down, due to the patient's complex medical conditions, or the families who do not have the capabilities to care for loved ones in their home. Many times it's seen as a failure for the family's part, but many persons do not possess the knowledge or skill set to complete complex medical needs of the dying patient. They trust and expect Iowa River Hospice to help them keep their loved one comfortable and help them as they say goodbye to their family or close friends. This is what we do, and the calm, peaceful tranquility at the Iowa River Hospice Home in its current state is necessary to allow for the proper pain and anxiety control, which is a common response in the end-of-life care. With increased traffic and noise, I am 100% sure increased doses of medications will be necessary to maintain the comfort. Families will not have the calm, peaceful, serene environment outside with our babbling brook and our sitting areas, which were built to allow for peaceful reflection during this most difficult time in their family's lives. This is the end-of-life home built by private community members, donations for the Iowa River Hospice to provide end-of-life care. The calm, peaceful tranquility for patients and families will be highly impacted with a road so very close to the hospice home. This was built for Marshalltown's cities, citizens, and families in the surrounding communities. Much thought was put into every aspect of the hospice home. Please reconsider the road, which will forever alter the peaceful tranquility and serenity of the sacred Iowa River Hospice Home. Think about how you wish to live your last days, weeks, moments, and your families need to process through the loss. What type of environment do you wish to leave to these citizens? This is your choice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Douglas Boyd, 809 Patterson Lane. I would also like to speak to the question about Iowa River Hospice. I wanted to start by pointing out what a boon that facility has been to this community. I doubt there's very many in this room who haven't known of a family or a patient who hasn't passed favorable ending days there. We're lucky to have that facility. I happened to be president of the board when we did the fundraising for that facility. We collected something in excess of $2 million from charitable contributions from hundreds of Marshalltonians at that time to raise that facility. We were fortunate to have the opportunity to put it where it is, away from everything, in a calm, tranquil environment. And now we see that that is threatened, and I stand opposed to that. The facility is one that Marshalltown should be proud of. It is a nonprofit organization. It was put in place by charitable contributions. Remember that when you think of encroaching upon that property. Finally, it seems to me that this is being handled in kind of a heavy-handed manner. If we don't sell, if we fight a sale, it'll be taken by eminent domain. I understand eminent domain. It's necessary a lot of times, but it particularly is less invasive when it's an individual or a for-profit business that is forced to lose their property in some way or another. Please remember that that's not the case with Iowa River Hospice, and protect that property. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
City Council, Mayor, my name's Wendy, excuse me, this is emotional. Wendy Rysinger. I've had the unkind type. Ah, start over. I've been blessed to be with people that have passed through the Iowa River Hospice. I am not a volunteer out there. I do know a volunteer with specific canines that go to nursing homes and also to Iowa River Hospice. I had the pleasure of being out there with a dear friend of mine of 40-plus years that fought cancer nine times. The last one took her. While she was placed out there, we went to the different areas around the hospice house. And she said, "It is so peaceful. It's just like being in the country." The day she passed, I was not there. I had went home on a quick errand. I came back to see a bald eagle taking my friend to the heavens. And boy, it moved the road to a different location.
Thank you.
Greg Brown, 707 Circle Drive, Honorable Mayor, honorable council members and staff. I'd just like to also follow up on the point regarding the Iowa River Hospice. And just one slight comment, and that is, I think as leaders of the community, we have an obligation to remember and honor decisions that have been made in the past. And as I think some of the previous people that have commented, that this was a citywide effort to find a location, and it was a citywide effort, maybe not the government, but the community together, came together to place this there for the various reasons that you've heard. And so now, X number of years later, we're considering reneging on a decision that had been made. So I'd like you to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
April Long, 9/11 May Street. I've usually not come to meetings and spoken out, but I've felt passionate about a couple of things tonight. I first learned about this road going through the hospice home at a United Way meeting a week ago. Everyone in that room was appalled. To those who are demanding that a road be placed in the hospice property, I have to ask, have you no moral decency? Would you choose to cause disruption and additional suffering to people in their final hours of life? How many of you have sat and watched someone die? I have. It's, you can't describe it. Death is sacred. Let these people keep the last days and hours peaceful and not be disrupted and disrespected by an unnecessary road. I respectfully ask that you stop this project and cause no further harm. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Janita Boyd, 809 Patterson Lane. My husband just spoke a little earlier. Midlander was our neighbor. She was the one who gave the seed money for the hospice home. You've also heard my husband talk about the fundraising. When you conceive of a home like this, it isn't just the interior of the home. It is the total surrounding of the home. It is approaching the home. It's sitting out in your car in the quiet to gather your thoughts and emotions before you enter the home. It's sitting out on the balcony, maybe with a loved one in their last days, to, yes, listen to the birds and to have some tranquility that is so important to the last days of life. So we've had this concept. It should be honored. It makes the city look totally without compassion to consider a road through there. And I consider it very heavy-handed. And there is no room for that type of city administration. And therefore, all you elected officials, it is your responsibility to make sure that such heavy-handedness is not part of our administration and community. And so again, I ask that you be also considerate and respectful of the hospice home.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Yep, one more. Well, I'm looking to one more.
I'm Audrey Lutz, 3034 Underwood Avenue, Gilman, Iowa. And my brother-in-law was a patient six years ago in May. And he really enjoyed going out on the veranda. I'm sorry, I forgot to say council members and...
You're fine.
Anyway, he really enjoyed that. He was a farmer, and he loved the outside. And I promised him that I would become a volunteer. And I took the class that fall. And I did volunteer. And I have been volunteering ever since then. And it is quiet. It is, you get the very best care when you're there. And I don't think we need a road that goes right by the back door of our hospice home. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, before we close, I would like to, in full disclosure, admit that I'm a past president. So is my wife, our senior partners that are dead now, Rex Reiden, John Veldy, a former associate in the firm. We helped in the fundraising. And for a number of years, I know the social workers will know that my wife and I donated legal services to anyone that needed a will or deed or anything else that were in hospice. In my opinion, and I don't have a vote, this road won't go through there unless there is no other way. And I've been trying to search other ways that if the road does have to go close to the hospice home, how we can have a nice, sound barrier and make it a nice view so that if that's the only feasible option for us to use, we can still preserve the dignity and tranquility of the hospice house, which I dearly love. I'd like to avoid going there as long as I can. But I'd like to remember the year that they were voted in the top two in the state of Iowa as having, being the best place to work. Those, you may have forgotten that, but they got that award that year, and it was well-deserved. And the staff are like family. Let's adjourn.